I'm going to open the zoning board of appeals meeting. It's Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. It's 7:05 PM. And this is being recorded. And sitting as a board of appeals are myself, Woody Chidick as chair, Dave McMorris, vice chair, Charlie Higginson as full member and three others, Lee Darst, Matt Watkins and Mike Dickey. Three alternates. So we're all here.
I just asked for a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, how about a roll call vote? Woody Chidick here, present.
Dave McMorris, present.
Charlie Higginson, present.
Lee Darst, present.
Michael Dickey, present.
Matt Watkins, present.
Great. Okay, so the only business that we have, I think, in front of us other than approval of minutes, which we'll tackle at the end, is the next meeting dates of the ZBA are scheduled to be March 1st and April 5th, both the first Tuesdays of those months.
I had one thing to to mention, if I may.
Okay, sure.
So I just got noticed yesterday that the newspapers on by Gate House Media, both The Mariner, all of the local small papers, plus The Patriot Ledger have changed their deadlines. And they didn't tell anybody. And also that they no longer allow every ad has to be prepaid within two weeks prior to the average, which makes it impossible based on how we were set up. So I've been talking to Lauren, is talking to John, and we're going to work out the billing on our end. However, I was wondering if we would want to consider moving the meeting to March 8th so I can advertise properly. But I don't know how everybody feels about that. I still can do it, but it's going to be in two different papers with a different cost to the applicants. So I could forward you the string.
Why don't we, why don't we just briefly touch on that? I mean, given COVID and everything, my calendar is embarrassingly open. So you don't have to worry too much about me. But how about the rest of you? Could we go to March 8th as opposed to the 1st and without disrupting your your work schedules?
I don't think I have any issues with moving to March the 8th.
Okay, Mike is okay.
I don't have any issues.
Please seem, you know, great. And we can always, you know, revisit this. This is not.
I can do it.
Charlie can do it.
I can do it.
Dave can do it. So Matt, it's up to you.
And it looks like I actually have one thing on there that's a that's a placeholder that's kind of 50/50. That but I should know on it soon. So why don't we go forward?
Okay.
I'll, you know, obviously try my best to
Sure.
figure it out.
All right, why don't we, why don't we go move then Jen to March 8th pending any any response, other alternate response from Mike, from Matt?
Okay. Great. I appreciate that. And then the other date was April 5th.
Yeah. Let's not get into that. It's a little quiet. Well, at any rate.
I know.
So why don't we move to our, we have two continued hearings tonight, the first of which I think is continued again. But Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, and that is the 508 3A property where Peter Cappizoli has a special permit pending to use two different hydraulic lifts.
That's correct. So I forward the email from attorney Henderson, who's representing Mr. Cappizoli. Last week, I forwarded it just with the reasons why. It's essentially, it's essentially a chicken and the egg. I think that perhaps they should have not filed as early as they did because they weren't, what's outstanding are the ASB builds, which can't be done until the spring for some reason. And the water department, they have been talking. So Henderson asked for continuation to March, but at that point, my recommendation would be to consider, you know, at this point, what are we continuing for? We haven't received any new information because.
Of course, yeah, you're right. I mean, they could withdraw without prejudice if the board agreed, and it would be their option to come back when everything is right, rather than I'm sure they're paying lawyers fees and other things that really are not necessary.
Right. And it's, you know, just with a lot of the transitions in the office and staffing for you, I would worry that somebody might. So what I would recommend, we can continue to March, but I can reach out to Rich and say, we're gonna really, the board would really like some additional information by March. Otherwise, I'd recommend you withdraw and come back when you're ready.
How does the board feel about that? It seems reasonable to me, but.
Jen, I did see in his email, he said he wasn't available in March. So
Oh, is that what he said?
He was almost asking for us to move it to April.
April. I wasn't certain what he was asking for and I, and so. Okay, so to April.
I mean, I don't know, to your point.
Well, I mean, you have to continue it forever. The only problem is you might run into inadvertently schedule time issue if we don't have formal requests or assume that it's being continued. That would be, you know, I mean, maybe remote, but I still would be concerned. Dave, how do you feel?
Seems to me that they're functional equivalents. I mean, if we get a letter from Richard saying, you know, he doesn't mind if we continue at any waste of deadlines, I don't really see a problem. Then they don't have to publish again and all that.
Yeah, okay. So it's six and a half dozen. All right.
So I'll just make sure.
Charlie, you in favor of Dave?
It's fine with me.
See what he comes up with. Anybody have any other objections or concerns? I mean, yeah, we can continue it. Why don't we ask Rich, though, that, you know, if it looks like it's imminent in the outgoing month, that's one thing. If it looks like it might be six months. I'm making that up. Silly.
I will reach out to him just to say, do you really feel it'll be April? So let me know how you feel, but we'll just continue month by month so we don't lose track of it.
Sure.
With the trend. Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so I would make a motion to continue this hearing until March 8th. As it presently stands, at least.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Woody Chidick, aye?
David McMorris, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. It's moved to March 8th. The second continued hearing pending any new information, I guess, is the application of Morse Engineering on behalf of William Aaron to construct a residential dock at 55 Gammons Road. Matt, you're the guy in the point here. Was any new information submitted? That was substance?
Yeah, they did submit a new site plan as well as a new essentially a new application to reflect some of those site plans. So maybe for everybody's benefit, Greg, I do have a couple of questions, but maybe you could just introduce yourself and walk us through a couple of the changes that came from the Conservation Commission hearing.
Sure. Thank you for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer Morse Engineering, representing the property owner Bill Aaron. As was just stated, this is a request for a special permit to allow construction of a dock at 55 Gammons Road, properties in the Residence C zoning district. It's also located in the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. Extending off the back of Mr. Aaron's property, he abuts Little Harbor. The proposal is to construct a pier that's approximately 144 feet long, which has access to a a dock float, which is 10 by 20. Since the last hearing, we've been to the Conservation Commission and received their approval. We submitted a revised plan to Conservation as well as zoning board here, which really addressed three comments. They were all in respect to compliance with Division of Marine Fisheries comments. That is, we added stops along the bottom of the float so that the float doesn't hit the mud flats at low tide. Secondly, we've raised the elevation of the dock to comply with Division of Marine Fisheries requirements for elevations over the salt marsh. We've proposed that the floor at six feet above the salt marsh, which is their requirement. And we provided additional information on pilings, of which there are 20 piles that are above the mean high water line and 16 below the mean high water line. I'm glad to put the copy of the plan up on the screen if you'd like to see it.
Sure, please do.
Sure. I think I need either hosting or sharing ability. If Jen could put that on.
It should be all set.
Okay, bear with me one sec here. So you should see a copy of the site plan up on the screen at this point. And what we had done is view. Was looking down here at the back of the property. This represents the pier coming out. At the end of the pier is an eight foot by eight foot square platform. We have an aluminum gangway down to the 10 by 20 float at that location. Zooming out, you will see a profile of the dock system at the top of the page here. The profile on the dock system specifies the height right here of the pier above the salt marsh. That's in compliance with the one and a half to one height to width ratio. That Division of Marine Fisheries specified for us at this location. And you see the depiction of the pilings, which are placed to support the structure. It extends out into Little Harbor. I will turn it back over to you. I'll leave this up on the screen for the time being.
Okay, Matt, you've got some questions, so why don't you take the lead in this?
Okay, yeah, I had two questions, Greg. One was just in regards to the the side setback. When I was looking at the plan, it looks like the closest point is 18.5 to the you know, to the step of the dock, if you will, and man, you know, I think we're in a 20-foot side setback district. And unless you saw something, I didn't, I'm wondering, you know, if that could be moved a foot and a half to be in compliance with the side setback.
Sure. So that's this location here on the plan. We thought that this was a was an accessory structure and would only have a six-foot side yard setback as it was less than 15 feet in height. If that's not the case, though, I'm sure we'd be glad to move it over the one and a half feet to comply with a 20-foot side yard setback.
Yeah, I didn't think it was. I don't know if anybody else on the board has an opinion. When I looked up, you know, accessory structure, I don't think we've considered docks as such, but I don't know if anybody has a.
Mr. Chairman, I think I was looking at this as well. We do have the accessory buildings are have a fairly specific description in our bylaw, and there's a separate description of boat docks in the in the use bylaw. So I don't think that we can assume that boat docks would be part of the accessory structure bylaw.
Okay, well, I think to be on the safe side, personally, it should be setback 20 feet. It's just a, you know, a slight swivel, Greg. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, I I agree, and we certainly can accommodate that to comply with a 20-foot setback. That's not a problem.
Okay. Yeah, the only other question I had, Greg, was just in regards to the height. I did see, you know, that given the feedback, the elevation has raised. You're still nowhere near, you know, you're still not, you know, at risk of being higher than accepted, but I the original application had the maximum height, including the railings of 13.38. And the new application has the max height at 10.9, which would indicate that that the elevation has gotten lower, not higher. Is that just an issue with the with the application or?
So the so the the pier itself, the highest point being at 10.9 on that. We did lower that down from the original in certain locations. It is a relatively, you know, it's a relatively flat pier with the exception of the ramp from the land onto the pier. It was originally higher, I believe, to get it higher up above the floodplain. Floodplain at this location is at elevation 10. That being said, the dock floor system and the stringers associated with it are above the floodplain at this location.
Okay, because, yeah, I mean, I even see areas, if you scroll up above, right where we're showing, it looks like the elevation is 13.3. What we're saying, the max is 10.9. If you look on the left.
So the exceptions where the stairs come on to the land, you're at 11.3, and then the majority of the pier here is at 10, 10.6 as it runs out. So.
That answer your question, Matt, or you concerned that we have a plan that
Yeah, I mean, I
usual that doesn't comply with the stated information.
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, we're obviously we're still in compliance with height, but I don't know, am I wrong in that probably 13 point, I mean, 11.3 would probably be the max height, including the railing of the dock. Probably in the decision.
Making it 15 feet, you mean, the 11 plus three and change? Is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, Greg, from what I see on the plan there, that is that just to the bottom?
So that's the that's the deck elevation? That's
Yeah.
You'd be standing on.
Yeah.
Your handrails are going to be, you know, three feet higher than that?
Yeah, yeah, because originally you have like two and a half foot handrails. I saw the height came up on the higher on the rails and then and then the stringers came higher. But somehow the elevation came down, which you know, so even if so the 11, 3 plus 3 would be your maximum height, right?
Correct. That would be max height.
So we should probably have that be 14, 3 on the application. As a max height.
Yes, that would that would work for max height of the handrails.
Right, which is how we would measure maximum height.
Yeah.
You know, the highest structural member, not. So you can accommodate that, then, Greg. Is that correct?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that was all from me. I mean, I think if we could get a plan that reflected the compliance on the side setback and the application to reflect the maximum height, including railing, to be accurate, then my questions would be satisfied.
How about other board members?
A question.
Dave is our other resident dock master.
Think those changes make it all fine with the changes.
Charlie, any issues?
No.
I don't. Lee?
No, I don't have it.
And Mike?
I have no problems or questions.
Okay. All right, well, I would make a motion. Well, actually, we have a decision draft before us, so.
Yeah, we're pretty close. I think the only, yeah, you know, so if we closed it tonight, would what would need everything within, is it 10 days?
14, I think.
14.
Which is fine, because we've just discussed the two changes in this line, as we have a plan is submitted that's, you know, slightly noted notated differently, you know. I think we're, that could be done anytime, you know.
Yeah, so I think I'd be comfortable with with the motion to close it. And I know from my end, I'll be good, and we'll just I'm sure the applicant can get us that. You know, and a couple of changes pretty quickly.
Exactly. So I'll make a motion to close this hearing on Gammons Road.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor? Woody Chidick, aye?
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Oh, yes, and aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay. It's now 7:26, and so we can move to our two new hearings. The first of which I'm going to recuse myself from, which is 28 Mohawk Way to construct a one-story room addition. I'm going to ask Dave McMorris if he wouldn't mind taking over the chair's duties for this hearing, this particular hearing. Are you willing?
I am willing. I do need a minute, though, to bring this up on the screen.
Okay. I'm going to probably mute.
You already muted yourself.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, if I, if I, when I mute myself, how am I going to know that the hearing is over?
I'll wait.
All right, all right, I'll leave the video on and I'll mute myself. That way I won't know what's going on, really.
Can I, John, I promoted you. Is there anyone else you need?
Yes, can you promote the burnettes, please, or Bill Burnett?
Okay, who's appearing for the applicant on this?
Hi.
John Tariaki.
Right. Good evening, John Tariaki, Tariaki Architectural Design. And I'm here with the owners of the property, 28 Mohawk Way, Bill and Sigrid Burnett. And I'd be happy to present the application and go over the materials that we submitted. I will go ahead and share my screen to help us summarize the project to the board. So 28 Mohawk Way is located a little further in Mohawk Way, and this is an aerial image that we submitted, which is important because it shows the conditions on the ground as opposed to the the site plan, which shows the actual right of way of Mohawk Way, which is significantly inward than what what the real life conditions are, which is why we're in front of the board. Because we're proposing this small sitting room addition along the front, which would be within the existing non-conforming front setback of the house. We submitted in the application, some of the existing setback figures on the front, the house is nine and a half, approximately nine and a half feet from the actual right of way of Mohawk Way. And the proposed addition, which is approximately 14 by 18 feet, continues that front alignment. Therefore, it's extending the nonconformity. And therefore, it would require a section 8.7B special permit from the board. The site also has some conservation restrictions related, somewhat related to where this addition is located. Most importantly, the 50-foot buffer line from the wetlands resource area that was flagged in coordination with Kavanagh Consulting, would develop the site plan. So the goal of the project is also not to encroach into 50 feet and stay between 50 and 100-foot buffer line. Therefore, the project would also require a permit from the Conservation Commission. I will go ahead and zoom in a little bit into the architecturals unless the the board has any questions about the site.
I have one question. What's the setback from that where Mohawk Way actually tracks?
Over here? Let's see, I don't have, we don't have that actual number notated. But if you just give me a second, I can measure that on my CAD file and give you that, give you that number. I believe it is approximately, it's over 30 feet. It's about 35 feet or so. If you go right to the edge of the curb or the plantings here. And as you can see, this actual paved driveway is shifted over. So it's partially outside of the right of way. So there's some interesting site conditions here.
Okay.
Along with topography and ledge and other other resource areas that are pocketed in. So if you were driving on that road, you just wouldn't know that Mohawk Way was actually doing this on paper. And just to go into the architecturals, this is the existing first floor plan, which has, we noted the non-conforming area. It's approximately 934 square feet on the footprint. And with our addition, the addition would add another 246 square feet of non-conforming area. So that's about 25% of what's there now on the ground. It's a one-story addition. So here's the existing front elevation and the proposed, just to compare the two. Basically, the entire existing front elevation facade area is non-conforming, about 1,859 square feet. So we would be adding a net of 109, because part of this overlaps with the existing. So even though this total area is 316 square feet, it would result in a net increase of about 6% of the front facade non-conforming area. On the right side of the house, existing facade area is about 423 square, 453 square feet. And the proposed actually happens to align fully within the existing, so there's no net net increase of the facade area on this side. And looking at it from the back, this piece that protrudes out technically increases the facade area of this view by about 102 square feet. And that's only because part of the addition, we will be looking at the back view of this little piece. And technically, none of this facade is nonconforming. So it's a one-story addition with a cathedral ceiling. It's basically a sitting room. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. I don't have any additional questions. The other members of the board?
John, what was, what is the proposed, is it a concrete foundation that you would propose?
Right, it would have a concrete crawl space depth foundation to typical frost level with a wood frame structure above it.
With the thought being like that, given the, given the ledge that's in that corner, you're far enough away from it, and you think it's excavatable?
You know, there's always a risk of running into ledge, and usually with crawl space or shallow depth foundations, they would go ahead and pin that into the ledge. Since there's no desire to have a basement or anything under this. If that happens, hopefully, they can just pin it without any chipping or anything like that. But it remains to be seen. As you know, it's a little bit of a minefield, nickel acid, but.
And then has the plan been shared with any of the neighbors, to your knowledge?
I don't know that, to be honest. The burnettes are here. Maybe they can shed some light on that. There's also some conservation hearings coming up, so we're just getting started on this, but the burnettes are here, and maybe they can clarify that.
Yeah, John, John, thanks, and great job proposing the the plan. I believe our neighbors do know. And we see the letter as well about this from And we see the letter as well about this from the, from the town.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have questions?
I, I had one question, uh, the nine point five feet from the property line uh to the existing house, but it looks like the lane curving there may curve closer to where the uh, the nine point five do, to to the proposed new building. Is is that correct or not? It'd be a matter of inches.
Um, that's a good question, I mean, according to the the curvature we have from the site plan, this this was more or less the tangent, but you know, I don't have an exact answer on that, it could be within the tolerance of, like, the thickness of this line at this point, but the intent was to continue to nine and a half. So if this is to be laid out with instrument survey in the field, they can be more precise and make sure that if it, you know, if this needs to be set back by a three-quarter or by an inch, uh, that will be the intent, so even though this is shown in perfect alignment, if this curvature, you know, when Cavanagh comes to the site to lay it all out precisely, um we, they would hold the nine and a half and not get any worse, even if it's a matter of inches, I think that would be the intent. Again, it could be the thickness of a trim board at this point, um, it wouldn't really affect the design.
Thank you.
Anyone else on board? All right, Jen, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
I don't see anybody, um, I'm just gonna stop the share, if that's okay?
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Um, this will help me see with, um, to see if there's any participants that have their hand raised. So no one has their hand raised, there's nothing in the Q and A.
Okay. I think we're, that's pretty comprehensive, anybody, any further questions, or John, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think we we covered it, um, yeah, and I'm if the board has additional questions after the hearing, we can submit additional information as required to.
All right, I'm gonna move that we continue this until our March meeting.
I'll second that, David.
Okay, all listen in favor, Dave McMorris, I.
Probably against an eye.
Michael Dickey, I.
Lee Darcey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
All right, thank you. See if we get, see if we get Woody's attention. He's back.
Okay. Nicely done, all right, um, we have a a second new hearing tonight, it's um at seven eighteen Jerusalem Road, fired, uh filed by Andrew and Susan Franklin to raise and reconstruct a non-conforming single-family home. They're looking for uh relief under eight seven B. So, uh, who's here to, ah, Jeff Delisi.
That's right, Jeff Delisi, uh, Susan Hoadley, and and landowner Susan Franklin.
Um, and there, there also should be Paul Backus, maybe from Grady.
I see him.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on this before we start, um, I'm out of town, so I only have the electronic packet. I'm, I'm looking through the application, and it says that the site plan shows the boundary lines, owners' locations, buildings, driveways, and parking areas of all immediately adjacent properties, but I can't find it in my packet.
Because this is an undersized lot, it's uh critically important. It's required, so the site plan will have to be re-redone, there's no question.
On that point, uh, the adjacent buildings are not on the site plan either. There is a photograph, which is without any dimensions, which shows the adjacent buildings, but I think the site plan should uh, have it and are, uh, the uh, the permit uh states that you should have the adjacent uh buildings uh.
I would agree, I, I, I think, I think we could continue to hear these people out a bit, but um, there's no question, I couldn't in good conscience, you know, get very much in-depth without, without a a site plan as required by our own uh rules and regulations. As long as you understand that, we can.
Yeah, no, i- it's an issue that we caught uh today as well, and we anticipated that we would be supplementing that plan uh to the board, and we were hoping that tonight could be an introduction of the project and explain what it is that we're interested in doing.
And rather than bog us down too much, um, my, my packet, and I, it might be just me, maybe it is the way it got stapled in Town Hall, I don't know, but I'm missing um, uh, uh, Plan A one oh two, which is a second floor plan, I'm missing A two oh five, which is south and east to elevations. And I actually have two of A two oh fours, so something must have gotten, somebody else may be missing a who knows, might, somebody else may have, in our board, have a two A, A two oh fives and no A two oh four, I don't know, but um um, we don't have those either. And and typically, Jeff, we also, it's, there's a plan here, a comparison, existing, proposed uh statistics. But because of the nature of this lot, which is undersized, width, frontage, um, we need a comparable chart for the entire, I think, the in, the entire property here. So that we can take a look at what's being done to an undersized lot, and are not performing a lot at that.
Okay, so um, I, I, I suppose I did not follow what you just said, Woody, on the, on the.
All right.
Parts.
Sorry, there, there is a plan, uh, it's called comparison, existing proposed.
Yeah.
Needed five January, and it's, it's got three tables on it. And uh, these are all, all dealing with, thank you, um, proposed uh uh structures within the setback. But I think because the nature of the lot is so um non-conforming, and in at least three to four respects, um, I think we need a a comparable uh set of three tables for the entire lot as uh existing and proposed.
Okay.
It, it just, it would help me immeasurably.
Okay, all right, uh, we can, we, we can do that, we can accommodate.
But, but anyway, I didn't want to bog it down, but I'm just saying this information I really couldn't deal with, because I was missing, missing some, some plans and data.
Yeah, uh, I, I, I suppose I'd, I'd like to apologize to the board for that, um, being incomplete. You know I strived, I strive to have a complete application, um, but nonetheless, I think that uh we can still um, go, go forward uh this evening and explain what it is that we would like to do, and we'll certainly get all of that information over to you.
Okay, and I, I could be the only one missing, not, not this three, three-table uh piece of submission, but uh I could be the only one with uh two missing plans and one duplicate, I don't know. Um, so why don't you proceed ahead, and we'll straighten this out.
Yeah.
So that, so that we'll, each of us will have a complete set, as I say, I could be the only person, so don't want to bog it down.
Um, certainly, uh, okay, so uh, to start formally, I'm Jeff Delisi, I'm the applicant's attorney, uh, Andrew and Susan Franklin are here this evening, uh, who are the applicants and the owners of seven eighteen Jerusalem Road. Paul Backus, our engineer from Grady Consulting, Susan Hoadley and Karina Martinez from Hoadley Martinez Architects. We're all here this evening because the Franklins are seeking a special permit uh pursuant to section eight point seven B of the zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Um, the property is located in the Residence B zoning district, as you indicated, Woody, or alluded to. Uh, the, the lot itself is non-conforming in uh three respects, it is non-conforming as to area. Whereas it has uh twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-three square feet in a thirty-five thousand square foot zone. Frontage, um, forty-two feet approximately in a fifty-foot zone. And lot width, which is approximately sixty-eight feet in a hundred and twenty-five foot zone. So we have a lot, uh, which is non-conforming in various respects. Uh, the dwelling on the lot was also constructed in nineteen twenty, and therefore it is pre-existing non-conforming. Um, because it is uh set off the easterly side yard approximately one point three feet in a twenty-foot zone. In all other respects, the existing dwelling uh conforms with the zoning bylaw setbacks. Uh, I'm gonna uh step back, I'm gonna ask Andrew, I know he'd like to say a few words, my client, and then I'm gonna uh, have Paul uh from Grady Consulting put the site plan up on the screen uh to show the board and the public, and then um we'll have Susan and Karina explain their architectural drawings and so forth, um, but in summary, I just wanted to point out that we are, the reason why, and I think that we're gonna get into this, we're moving the, the reconstructed dwelling closer to the road is because there's ledge in the rear of the lot. And we're trying to uh kind of bring the house away from the ledge uh, uh, towards the street, and there is plenty of room to do that. We're not proposing any new non-conformities, and to the contrary, we are um proposing to improve an existing non-conformity on the easterly side yard by moving the proposed reconstructed dwelling further from the easterly side yard than presently exists. We um, we have shared our plans with our most recent affected neighbors, uh, and we understand that they have submitted a letter articulating concerns. Um, and we believe that our proposal meets the criteria of the bylaw. And uh, w- we know the burden is on us to demonstrate why that is, and we'll attempt to do so, so um, if it's okay, uh, Jen, if, if uh Andrew can speak, and then we can move from there. Andrew, is your mic on?
Mic is on, hello, everybody, appreciate the time, can you hear me? Um, Andrew and Susan Franklin, just to give you a little bit of a who and a quick why. Um, Susan and I have lived in town for twenty-four years, um, we lived on Lambert's Lane, so we sold our house last, last year. Um, three children, all went through the Coasette schools, graduated, moved on. Um, we've been very actively involved in the community through those, the years with our kids', uh, sports teams, et cetera. Susan's been on the Coasette Education Foundation as a board member, currently uh the, the bookkeeper for the Coasette Education Foundation, Susan also on the uh Capital Budget Committee, serving in a third term. Uh, just a little more background, Susan's owned a small business here in town, Dallas Lemonade for twelve years. Um, so just a little bit of a context, and then the why, and we're hopeful that we can uh build a house that we can um, you know, retire to, retire in and have our children come back um, to visit us in Coasette, because we love it so much, and hopefully someday bring the grandchildren. So that's the why, um, we love the town, want to build a house that our, our children and our grandchildren will come back to and and visit, visit us, so appreciate your time.
Okay, Paul?
And can I share my screening? Does everybody see that?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Paul Backus with Grady Consulting, uh, the civil engineer for the project, um. Uh, as Jeff, as Attorney Delisi kind of alluded to, um, we are in Residence B District, um, is very we've talked about how uh the site itself is a very obscure, very narrow lot, uh, it's located, um as we, as we know, seven eighteen Jerusalem Road, just west of Paul Road, off, opposite the Straits Pond. The existing, the existing structure, um, as Jeff was mentioning, is approximately one point three feet uh from the right side. Uh, that is the, in terms of zoning setbacks, that is the the non-conformity that that exists, you can see the magenta line here, it kind of represents the existing setback based on uh, the zoning, uh, the zoning requirements, uh, under the proposed conditions, um, as was also discussed. Um, the, the the uh zoning setback on, along the right property line would increase, like, increase to three point two feet, so making it um, so not, not increasing the non-conformity, um, on the, on the westerly side of the property line. Uh, we would, we would remain within the uh zoning setback. Uh, the house was, the proposed house is shifted slightly forward compared to the existing house, this is due to some of the existing uh topographic features of a lot, specifically the ledge, you know, there's been recent recent um, uh, bylaws, um, or uh standards being brought into the town regarding ledge and ledge removal. Um, so we're trying to limit the impact to the ledge, and that's part of the reason the house is moved forward. Uh, the existing driveway was shared uh with the abutting property that has uh number seven twenty-two Jerusalem Road, they have since um put a new driveway within their property and no longer require um the access through the existing driveway. So under the proposed conditions, the driveway be relocated, so that is single driveway for access just to seven eighteen Jerusalem Road, be contained entirely uh within this lot. Some of the other features you just see on this plan are in preparation for stormwater application that will also be required. But I think we can pass it off to Susan.
Good evening, uh, members of the board, uh, my name's Susan Hoadley, I am with Hoadley Martinez Architects, and I am joined tonight by Karina Martinez, who will uh chime in with technical data uh to support my presentation, uh, Paul and Jeff and the Franklins, thank you for yours, um, I am here tonight to explain why we believe that our proposal should be considered under the bylaws. It is uh as, as Jeff and Paul explained, um, of an extremely non-conforming lot. Um, and it's important that we have the opportunity to explain that we're working with this significant existing non-conformity to explain um why we believe that uh what we're doing should be considered. So if we could put um drawing EX one oh one up on the screen, I'll show you how we work inside of those non. So hopefully everyone's screen, is that, everyone's screen will show um, a yellow area, which shows the setback that Paul just described on the site. And it shows uh the yellow area is existing non-conformity. Um, it's significant, as you will see, and the distance from the corner to the edge, I'll reiterate, is only one point five feet, the if you look at the first floor plan on the right, you'll see that the existing non-conformity is six hundred and thirty-two square feet in plan dimension, and then if you go up to the second floor, you'll see that the second floor of the existing conditions are five hundred and sixty-six square feet. Going to the next page, these are the elevations of the existing conditions on the site. The things I'd like to have the committee do their best to note is, on the upper left drawing, the north elevation, you'll see that four hundred and sixteen square feet is in the setback as non-conforming, and that uh the highest mid-slope, the highest point to the mid-slope on, on the in this area is eighteen feet, ten inches. The highest point on the west elevation is twenty-four feet high. So that, taken together with the drawings below it that show the non-conformities and the setbacks, tell you the picture of what we're contending with as an existing condition that uh as we present our proposal, we are proposing to alleviate. Jumping to the draw, the basement drawing and introducing the plans of what we're proposing, um we are in, just as the um, the, the project that came before us will be doing, we're going to have to excavate uh to find out how much ledge is under the ground, and we will. Uh, to find out how much ledge is under the ground, and we will attempt to pin. Hopefully without doing any chipping on this project. So, uh, this is, this is the extent of the basement, as we know that basement will be formed. The next drawing is the first floor plan of what we're proposing. The yellow area is commensurate and in the same scale as the previous drawings that we showed, that showed the existing non-conformity. The building, um, is largely outside of the setback as we're developing the site. The yellow show area again shows the new and proposed. And we are actually taking, as Paul explained, we're taking the building away from the non-conforming. Um, condition of about a foot and a half, um, pulling it away. To be, uh, what is it, three feet, three point seven feet now? So we're, we're pulling it away from the, the, the non-conforming. We're, we're pulling that corner non-conformity away from the line. The resulting, uh, the resulting area on this floor is seven hundred and ninety-three square feet. Which is, um, an increase over six hundred and thirty-two of non-conformity. Second floor plan, um, is, is smaller than first. It's, uh, five hundred and seventy-six square feet proposed new construction. And then there is a space on, uh, uh, there's a space on the roof. For what's labeled a penthouse, really what it is, is it's just an outdoor access area to a roof deck. With typical attic, uh, program inside of it, storage and mechanical. And then some recreation space. We, to speak to the architecture of the shape that we have come up with, um, by right, we are able to. Create much higher, uh, mu- much more volume. From a height point of view, if we take the midpoint of the, the sloped roof, but what we've decided to do instead. Is to just make a smaller flat roof room per se on the third floor, which, um, results in. We think a better condition from the, um, the, the east and the west. Going to the roof again, um, this, this is a diagram that explains that, that. Third floor room, um, is a generic low slope roof. So two or the other low, uh, uh, flat appearing roofs on the project. And so here are the proposed elevations. The, um. Again, uh, using flat roofs instead of sloped roofs, we're able to get the net height down. And what we're showing on this plan is, um, you show this one there. Twenty-three feet ten, where Karina is moving the mouse from the median grade up into. The parapet of the garage, which is, uh, in the setback. Moving around to the sides of the house, the, the sides that would be viewed by, uh, the neighbors to the left and right. On the, uh, south elevation analysis at the top, we have thirty-three foot four. To, to the highest point, but it's very important to remember that that is set way back. From, from the, uh, from, from the main plane. And then, as you go down to the east elevation at the bottom, you'll see that, uh, that this amount of. Yellow shaded area is in the setback. The highest point here is at thirty-three feet four. The, which, um, is basically forfeiting the ability that we would have had by right. To build to thirty-five feet to the midpoint, and thus. Net, a net lowering of the height of the building. The twenty, the corner here. Is twenty-three foot ten, and the corner at the bottom. Uh, what, that, where the mouse is now is at sixteen feet two. And then this is the, uh, this is the zoning comparison table page that Woody referred to. Um, when you look at the, I think the numbers tell a story. That, um, that explains that the, uh, that the. Things that we're proposing are dealing with existing non-conformities in a major way. The delta, the, the, the first table here, the gross floor area and setback. Um, table, I think it's significant to see that when you look at what we're proposing to add. It's. A hundred and sixty-one square feet on the first floor, ten square feet on the second floor. And then the penthouse floor would be six, sixty-nine square feet in the setback. The, uh, I think that the elevation area and setback comparison is self-explanatory. And the third table that we show, um. Again, shows that the existing structure has significant non-conformity of almost twenty thousand square feet. Of building volume, or cubic feet, and the inside of the setback, um, in, um. Inside of the setback is eleven thousand one hundred square feet. Finally, um, addressing the, uh, concern that, uh, we. Have received in the light breaking letter that was shared with us. We understand that the neighbors are, um, inquiring about, uh, the notion of, uh. Light and shadow impact on their property. If we go to. Google Earth. Now, uh, Karina will show with the hand, you know, approximately the way that the sun will move. The sun will come up in the morning, and, uh, shadows will be cast on the. Shadows are actually cast from our, our neighbor to the east onto our property. Uh, there is not, the shadows that are cast during the bulk of the day are actually onto our own property. And we, um, we don't think that, um. Light and shadow will be significantly impactful to either of the structures to either side of us. That's it.
Okay, would you do me a favor? I'll turn it over to the board in a sec, but because I don't have. Um, A one oh two. Would you go to A one oh three and then go back to A one oh two? I'm curious about this roof deck below. Um, portion. Um, why haven't you shaded in? The, uh, what does it say? Outside roof deck. Why isn't that shown as being within the setback?
Cause it's not living space. Cause it's not living space?
Doesn't have to be a living space. It has to be a building, and it's a building by zoning definition.
It's shown on the first floor. Yeah, Karina explained that, uh, we, the way we did that was by showing it on the first floor.
Well, okay, show me the first floor. Where?
A one oh one?
Yeah. But is, is any of that structure? Um, on A one oh two? No, go the other way. Says outside roof deck.
We just show what the living area is in the setback. Yeah, Karina just explained, the, the way that this is depicted, Woody, is that it, it, uh, is just shown as living area.
Yeah, but that, okay, but you'll have to re, re, re-show this correctly.
We'll add that.
By with the bylaws and re, redo your numbers, because it is a structure. It's in fact a building. And there's nothing in the bylaw, you know, just, there's nothing in the bylaw that speaks about habitable space.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. But the, isn't the question, the, the, the roof deck on the second floor, that's not. Shaded a yellow now.
Right.
That's on top of the garage. Which is, in the first floor plan, that area is shown in. That's just the top of the roof.
That roof. It's, it's part of, it's a structure within the setback, as far as I can see, unless it's. Um, not any taller than the first floor. It may, that may be. I don't have enough, I didn't get an elevation either on this side, so I'm kind of flying blind. I mean, that's what I said upfront, so I'm not. Um. If, if you follow me, I can see that.
Yeah. Sure, Woody, we'll, uh, what, for the, the next go-around, we will include.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I think it's got to be kind of a comprehensive look at. What's there, because it's a question of massing.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll shut up and let the, the board speak, but I, I, I will point out that. Um, this struck, proposed structure is going to have a volume that's greater, slightly greater, than three times. What exists. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a three-fold increase. No, it's a, it, the volume is going to be three times what it is today. Which is significant, given how close it is to the lot line, how close it is to the neighbors, and how small the lot is. It's, I think we've got to think about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we did, we did explore what it would mean to develop this lot. In the by-right area. And to do so would have resulted in an almost brutally long building. Um. So these, you know, while we, while we realize that to ask for zoning relief to this extent is, is to ask a lot. We are, um, you know, we're also. We're also asking for consideration of the, uh, the nature of the lot itself.
Okay. Fair. I, I, I really would, would, I'd like to hear, have the board s- speak on this or ask questions.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of dots, you know, of things you could look at too is, um. You know, typically as a board, I think we struggle with these types of, um. Volume increases, and, um, when we take a look at it too, we have to take a look at. Um, the neighborhood as a whole, right? So, you know, obviously the direct to budding of neighbors, um. And then the neighborhood, so like any, any sort of data that you could. That you could provide us that. You know, shows the makeup of the neighborhood. And then, you know, I don't, whether you want to articulate it tonight or at a, at a different time, you know. We, we'll need to hear from you as to, you know, really why you think. This fits the makeup of the neighborhood, I think.
Yeah.
You know, without, without deliberate, without deliberating, I will say, you know, like, these types of increases are definitely something that. That we struggle with, so we, we will need, you know, as much. From, from you as to why you think it, it fits the bill, so that's probably all I have to say at this point.
Okay, and we will come back with, uh, the da- data of adjoining houses and comps in the neighborhood. A, a quick look at the, um, a quick, a quick look at the aerial. Um, as well as a quick drive-by reveals that right now. The, uh, the house as it stands is almost, um, comically diminutive to what's around it. The, uh, the other houses, um, both the one across the street, the one that is being. Indicated to the, uh, to the west, and also the house with the red roof. And all, and the, the houses behind it are all, uh, I would say in. Incomparable size, height, scale, and mass when you put, uh, what we're proposing next to them.
Yeah, Susan, you're, you're, you're correct, except that these houses also have a lot of, uh, land around them. This is, this is chock-a-block right in between two houses. I mean, you could practically touch the lot line, and one of your drawings. Shows a door on the first floor, actually probably within five or six inches of the lot line. I mean, you know, swinging out, i- it's, uh.
Woody, we'll, we'll look, we'll look for that data. I, 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 uh. Um, looking for instance at the, at the house directly to the west. Um, on a Mass GIS plan, it shows me that, uh, you know, I, I. Completely understand your point with the concept of land around it, that, that, that one has a narrow aspect as well. As it goes, uh, front to back and, uh. Almost a, not a pear shaped like this, but a similar kind of pork chop. And the house is on, on the narrow part, so there is, there is some of that, um.
Yeah.
Um, and I could, if you want, you know, we could, we could bring up the, that plan now, but I, I, I think that.
Well, it'd be worthwhile.
The purpose of this hearing is, is you want to see additional data.
Getting your, your story in, in order. I mean, you know, I, only because. I'm, I'm left, partly because of the, of missing plans, uh, probably not your fault, I don't have no idea. And, and so on and so forth, but this is a little house right between two other houses. It's going to be three times. Uh, its size, so it's going to dramatically, I mean, right now, I don't know what it started out to be, but it doesn't matter. Um, but certainly it's going to loom large over its two neighbors, and. We, Jeff, as you probably know, rarely run into a situation where a non-conforming house and a non-conforming lot. Is multiplied to this extent. You know, usually we deal with forty, fifty, sixty percent increases, that's a concern. But not, not increases, uh, over two hundred percent that make it a three times larger structure. So it's something we have to wrestle with.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and I, I think Susan attempted to explain, you know, the architectural reasoning why. It's, it's necessary to take advantage of that, uh, space. Um, but I, I, I do understand, and we'll, we're going to take a harder look at that.
I, I haven't heard from Dave yet. Dave?
I, I had a couple of questions that I can't tell from the plans. Is there any wetlands on this lot?
There are no, no wetlands on the, on the lot.
Okay. And. You know, on that, um. That kind of plot plan map that's in there, it looks to me like that the house on the west side is almost on the property line over there. So.
Yep.
You know, and it's one of the reasons that we need that kind of a slight, because to, to kind of. Assess the impact upon the neighborhood itself, you know, the location of the existing houses in the neighborhood is very important.
Agreed. Uh, Susan, could you, could you stop your screen share for a minute? Um, and I'm just gonna, just gonna put my screen up. Um, and see if I can find my. Plan here. Where's my Mass GIS? Here it is. So that, and that, um, I think is what you're referring to over here, and this is, this is how I. Uh, you can see a lot of strange lot lines in this neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And we're gonna have to take a harder look at it, uh, but this is our lot here, and this is how I was explaining almost a pear shape. Um, so you can see why, you can see why, uh, Susan and Karina, um, you know. Are. Challenged on, on this lot, uh, if, if they, they're seeking a reconstruction over here. We, we have a house that is, uh, almost, uh, you know, if not maybe a little closer, I, I, I don't know what it is. But, um, yes, uh, to your point, it kind of narrows, and it's a, a, kind of a large house. Tucked into the narrow portion of the lot, uh, in, in, in that location.
Whi- whi- which isn't readily, um, seen visually, because, because of those other pork chop accesses, uh. Well, it, it looks. It it looks as though the land all belongs to seven twenty-two, and you're saying it doesn't.
Right.
Yeah, there are other other properties that, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
This is helpful.
Um, I I know, I know it's helpful, uh but yeah, it's important, I think, to have the context to your point of the neighborhood, because that's really ultimately what you're judging this against is is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use? Um, a- as you know, uh so anyway, that's all I have on that at the moment.
Um, the other question I had is in my packet. I have all the plans and everything, but I I don't have that um the chart that summarizes the
That that was, that was provided, uh the application was filed, I believe, on a Friday, Thursday or Friday, it was Friday, it was Jen's last day, I believe. And uh the supplement with the charts was filed on Monday. The following Monday, so I don't, if that did not make it to your packet, it might have to do maybe the fact that you you no longer have a trusty guard at the helm with with Jen.
I I think I put him, I might have just missed one in the packet. I did get both and I apologize.
I don't have, I don't have.
You can be excused for wanting to get out of town hall as quickly as you could.
I came back, I came back and.
I know, I know. Foolish woman, go ahead.
It is so nice to see you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff, can you put it up on the screen?
Um, sure, yeah.
We ought to, just as an aside, I I think we've got to kind of re-group and make sure everybody on the board has a complete you know, set of whatever was submitted. Dave's missing something I have, he's got something I don't have. Uh, who knows? You know, it's it's, it's going to be chaotic, uh but it's.
Well, well, what we're gonna do is is I can already tell is is uh, I'm gonna submit a new, a new plan package.
A new packet.
Yeah, we're gonna redate it. And then we're we're gonna check to make sure each page is there, and then we're gonna tell you to to.
Throw the rest away.
Throw the rest of it out and look at this. Yeah, and I I apologize.
Well, who knows?
I don't know.
We don't know where this happened. I I'm not interested in pointing fingers. It's just that, as you know, it makes it difficult to
You need all the.
To be on the same page. I mean, literally in this case, but figuratively as well.
The second, um, I think the other one was just a stapling thing, but the um, if we just always make sure we get the electronic version, because David's only dealing with electronic. That means I must have not had it electronically, right? David, you're working only with the electronic packet.
This, this sheet was only submitted on paper, it was not submitted.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Well, I feel a little bit better about my brain, but um but. Uh, we will work together, Jeff, and make sure everything, okay?
So Dave, I don't know if you finished your thought on this one.
Um, I I just you know, I do see that there are issues with the lot and trying to work with the lot, but it's also tripling the size of the house. So I I I think this site plan is pretty essential to being able to even consider what we're doing here.
Yeah, I agree. Charlie, what about you?
Um, I'd like, if possible, on a new site plan, which I agree is totally necessary. Uh, if you could give the height or approximate height of the two adjacent houses, uh it would help my consideration of this issue.
Okay. Now, how about all you other folks? Matt and and Lee and Mike, Dicky?
Uh, Woody, it's Mike here. I I'm I'm, you know, I I think we're on the right track and I definitely think, as folks have already said, uh that there's, you know, some more work to more work to be done. So, you know, I think gotta go back to go back and get some more data for us and that sort of thing, but
Yeah.
I don't have any specific questions or anything like that.
Okay.
Will this have to go through a large house um review?
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, by the way, I spoke to um John Howland, uh and I'm sure you're aware of this, particularly, I mean, Susan and Karina in particular, but because uh the house uh one facade of the house comes so within five feet of the lot line, it's got to be fire rated construction. And there will be that, which which really means that you can't use combustible material, wood or whatever. Um, but more likely, uh, I don't know, cement siding or something there, but I'm not designing it. I'm just saying you're gonna have to that's a
Yeah.
It's a step or hurdle or whatever you want to call it, you have to sort of achieve as well.
Thank you.
And that's more related to a building permit. It is not a zoning matter really, but um.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, okay, Mike spoken, Lee?
I asked about the large home review and where it's going to be situated.
Yeah.
Answered that question?
Well, it it's a little unusual that something would come to us before the the planning board. It doesn't, it's not a knockout or anything of the sort, but um you know, if they make any uh, were we to approve this? And I have no idea because the magnitude change here. Um, and they were to be successful in making any changes, it'd have to come back to us, so.
It's a chicken and the egg, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's not a
If it were the reverse.
It's not, it's not written as a rule or uh, you know, a rule of thumb. It's just, but usually the large home review is uh done first, but it doesn't matter to me. Do we need any other? Uh, I I think we've cited a lot of things that tabular things, some some mixed up pages, missing pages, that uh the yellow uh uh color of a of a roof and a new site plan showing the neighbors and Charlie's request for height. Uh neighboring height here. So with that, I don't know. I mean, if there's more information the board would like to see between now and the March meeting far away, otherwise I'll assume that, well, it's not over. I mean, we we could have an epiphany tomorrow and say, I'd like to see X, Y, Z, but at least let the applicants know basically what we're expecting. So with that, I would actually make a motion to continue this uh hearing until.
Woody, can we hear if there's any neighbors?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, Jen, I'm sorry. I absolutely, because we did get that letter from the neighbors.
We had a letter which I did distribute um into Franklin's. There are quite a few people and, you know, six or seven people in the audience. Um, there's nothing in the Q and A, given all the changes that are gonna happen for the, between now and the next um hearing. It's, I mean, if anybody wants to speak, they can raise their hand and we can promote you, or you can put a Q and A, a question in the Q and A that can be addressed. So wait a moment and see if anybody uh addresses the board.
Sure.
Okay, we have one, uh Elaine Breslow, I'll promote. The panelist. Okay, um Elaine should be here. Let me see.
There she's now, I think, okay. I don't see video, but I.
Yeah, there we are.
Yes, hi, good evening, Elaine Breslow, seven fourteen Jerusalem Road. Um, I I guess I I just want to preface um this meeting by saying that uh we think of ourselves as welcoming neighbors and we would like to uh project ourselves as such. Um, we clearly have concerns about the size and scope of this project. Um, as well as um having concerns in terms of privacy, height issues, um the sense of uh, you know, the structure, which is more in keeping really with an urban setting than what is already here and present. A lot of our homes, ours in particular, and certainly across the way at seven thirty-nine Jerusalem Road and seven twenty-two Jerusalem Road. Um, it may, again, um to be um generous, I will say that perhaps the applicants have not fully uh understood or appreciated the impact that uh such a small lot and increasing uh what I would call just not a a modest expansion of of the existing nonconforming structure, which is grandfathered and and clearly has been here for a very long time. Our house, for example, has been here since eighteen seventy-six. Um, the other homes, uh or maybe eighteen eighty, they are part of historic estates, Howe, Pope, Hyde, et cetera, and and definitely um have an impact on the neighborhood and the district if you look along Jerusalem Road. So again, uh I do want to say that we are not uh willing to be absolutely welcoming neighbors. But um perhaps these applicants do not fully appreciate the impact, the um the the debt, really detrimental uh expansion that this nonconforming expansion would have on the existing homes in terms of privacy and all sorts of other considerations. So I I just, you know, uh wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Jen, who else is in the queue?
We have no one else who has raised their hand at this. Oh, wait, wait, one more. Oh, uh, the Peter, Peter and Deirdre Hobson. I've just promoted. All Mr. Mrs. Hobson, you are are up on the main screen.
Are they, I see them muted, Jen, uh.
I just asked them to unmute.
Oh.
Um, there we are. Are we there now?
I can hear your voice.
Can you hear us now?
They're longer muted.
Can you hear us now?
Yep.
We're unmuted.
Yes, you're good to go.
Not there yet.
Yeah, you're there.
You're there.
We can hear.
Are we there? There we are.
Yeah.
Sorry. Can you hear us?
Yes, yes.
We're not muted.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
They can't hear us, I think.
Do this every day. There we are. That's Bill Burnett.
Okay, I would suggest that we um, I can email them or message them that they send in their concerns.
Interesting. We can hear them, but they can't hear us, huh?
Elaine says she hears us. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Go ahead, Peter. Just talk. Jennifer's waving. She hears us.
Okay. Um, yeah, we were just wondering if we'll be able to get some of the information, um the charts before the the next hearing. Um, we're also hoping that we could um get a better um shadow study that um Google Map, we didn't think was very helpful. And I think that's about it.
Study.
The light study.
Well, that would be, can you hear me?
I can't.
They cannot. Okay, well, I think we should just communicate with them that that would be up to the applicants. I mean, we can't have neighbors ordering an applicant for certain information, the board can, but I would say that uh if there was something more um that would um elucidate uh the better, but that's, we'd leave that up to the applicants.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna put uh I will figure out a way to email them and tell them that, because I can't figure out um how to post them. We did have one other comment, which was, I believe, from the neighbors who drafted the letter and that they stand, they are still supportive of the letter they submitted and the previous person's um uh submit uh, what they just said, Mrs. Beslam. So that's what we have so far, and um I'm gonna figure out, I can figure out how to get in touch with the Hobsons.
Would would you also get get in touch with the neighbors? They wrote a very thoughtful letter that um under eight seven D. The real test, B one, is is a detrimentality to the neighborhood. I I if if they can address that um specifically.
So they're here on this call, so.
I mean, they can tell the board is 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 interested and curious about this issue. But um they'd have to speak to, or it would be helpful if if they feel that it would be detrimental to the neighborhood for them to speak specifically to that point.
Okay.
But you can do that offline or tomorrow, whenever, I mean.
Um Elaine Breslow has raised her hand once again. I've already put her back in the panelist.
Jen, I think she responded on the chat.
So so I I I would just say that um given the historic nature of this district, of this particular neighborhood along Jerusalem Road, and given um, you know, the Massachusetts Cultural Research Information System, how it lists the homes along this this neighborhood that um having a structure, number one, um looming and kind of wedged in between two homes, um definitely alters perhaps even the economic uh situation of these homes in terms of resale. Uh, in terms of certainly in preserving the historic nature of this neighborhood and along Jerusalem Road. So it isn't just this specific, I mean, we can, you know, carve out a little circle of of these particular uh butters. But if you, no one needs to go much further than along Jerusalem Road or even up Howe Road or onto, you know, Diablo Lane to look at the estates and uh even further along Jerusalem Road to know that these these properties and this architecture has been here for a very, very long time, and this particular proposal is certainly incongruous uh and not in conformity what exists here. So we we certainly are, you know, prepared and are happy to submit further information if the board feels that that would be helpful. Again, it's not, we are not looking to curtail something that a thoughtful homeowner would like to do in the neighborhood. What we're trying to do is to make sure that it is not invasive, that it is in keeping with the area and the historical record of what is here and what makes this cohesive beautiful. Uh, and that it is not uh overstepping something that is really immodest in its expansion. Um and and we're, again, we are happy to provide photographs with how light may be affected in terms of the abutting property owners, in terms of the comfort of the way the existing properties have come to utilize their homes. Um, so you know, we're happy to do that. And again, it is not to be antagonistic, it is to be uh, as as we are mindful and respectful, we would, we would just ask that um the same be afforded to the rest of us as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, Jen, in the queue?
No, and also um the the people that wrote the letter wrote in the chat that they will address the uh detrimental to the neighborhood. And I have reached out to the Hobson's, um, Mr. Hobson's sister, because I know her, and asked them to reach out to them and have them email me and I can get back to them regarding plans, et cetera, and um, you know, the response that you had for the shadow light study.
But certainly he and everybody, anybody else is free to go to town hall and get a a set of
Absolutely.
Plans is submitted, you know.
And they can, yep, and they can email me for the electronic version as well. Um, and always the clerk will have uh that will have a copy as well when I have anything new.
Okay. This is uh Andrew Franklin. We provided the full set of plans to our butters.
Okay. Well, it's, you know, the board has asked for some more information, so. We'll consider that as sort of an amended packet, but, um. For anybody interested. Okay, well, with that, um, I think we've got a, a, a little shopping list of, uh, stuff that needs doing. And there's nobody with their hand raised, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would make a motion to continue this hearing until March eighth. Where we will, uh, take a look at, uh. Uh, requested information and any other information that's not been requested, but the, um, varying people think is relevant. For, against, or whatever. So, I made the motion to continue the hearing. Till March eighth. Seconded by Charlie Higgins. Okay, all in favor? Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
It's an aye.
Okay.
Lee Darst, aye.
Lee, and then?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Matt, okay, so this is continued, uh, until next month. Um, we'll now segue quickly into. Uh, deliberations, um.
Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome. And, and lastly, we, I don't know, Jen, if we have minutes, but we'll deal with that in a sec. Thank you all for coming. Um, there is nothing to deliberate on the, uh, Capizoli, uh, property at five oh eight. CJC beyond what we discussed. And that is a question of do they want to continue and continue, or do they would like to, uh, refile, but. Up to them, and then we have Matt Watkins. Draft decision on the, uh, proposed doc by William Kieran, uh, with a couple of, uh. Changes, physical dimensional changes. Um. Where, um. I, I didn't sit on the, uh, twenty-eight Mohawk Way. I'll leave it up to Dave to decide if that's. If there's somebody, uh, assigned to that decision, if it's better to continue or not. And this one has already been continued. So the only thing before I. Recuse myself from any deliberation that may go on on Mohawk Way is Matt, uh, Watkins. Um, draft decision. With at least two changes, but. Uh, not particularly substantive, um.
Right, yeah, so I think, you know, the. It was a. Fairly standard, um, doc application. Uh, just caught a few things, has looked a little bit closer at it, and, um. You know, but all of the requirements, uh, have been met with the, by the applicant in terms of. Of height, um. Square footage and. Um, you know, use of the doc for private purposes, so. Um. I think I just have some. You know. Edits to make in, in terms of those two dimension, dimensions, and then also, um. Just kind of updating a little bit from tonight's meeting and, um. You know, he, he also mentioned, and Jen, you might know this, so he did say that they received approval from the Conservation Commission, right? So that means.
They did.
Do they have a, an order? Can we say they have an order of conditions or?
I haven't received anything. What I should do is, is email Greg and, um. They, he wrote us in the email about why they amended it. They just got approval. I don't know, Alan, I can take a quick look while you're still chatting. And, and see.
Yeah, cuz I can get you this quickly, the, um. You know, unless, you know, if anybody has any feedback, I'm happy to take it, but, uh, uh, otherwise, I'll make those edits and I can redistribute.
There are, there, I, I had one or two really small, sort of grammatical things. I think in your decision. Maybe it's, uh, point number two, you refer to as builds. Uh, plans, it should be as built. The T and not DS, but I mean, that's. Embarrassingly trivial.
Okay.
Sorry to.
Caught that. Tell you what I do with my life. No, no problem. Okay, yeah, I'll take that, and then I'll, through Jen, I can distribute a final version, um, and then hopefully we'll get to.
Okay, well, if, if we approve that. Tonight, you have fourteen days to make any edits or receive any. Any grammatical or other comments. So I'd make a motion to, um. Close the hearing and, and not. Close it and accept the, uh, draft decision as, as, uh, drafted. With edits. Anybody want to second that?
Uh, Michael Dickey will second that, Woody.
Good man. Thank you, Mike. Okay, moved and seconded. Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
And, and I haven't seen the decision, so I'll, I'll not vote.
Okay.
So I will, um, I looked up the information and Jeff said that there was a letter. Jeff Hassett actually sent it, and I don't see the letter in the attachments, so. Um, I will send an email to Greg. And, and they both were, they both work on it, so I'll find out what the, um, approval was for CONCON. Like, I'll do that after I get off of this meeting. Um, and the only other thing is that we just probably need an assignment for Mohawk. You wouldn't prob, you wouldn't be doing any deliberation at this point.
Dave, that's up to you, or?
Yeah, does anybody want to volunteer for the draft Mohawk decision?
Sure.
I'll do it.
Yay.
Yay, ladies. And I did send you minutes. I heard you didn't read them, Woody, but it's okay.
I didn't read them, damn. You sent them to me, or was it?
They're, they're, they were in the packet and, and. No.
They weren't in the packet.
Oh, no, no, I sent them to you separately. That's correct, cuz I had written them, but I needed to check on something.
Oh, I, I went right over them then, okay.
So, yeah, I sent you a few different emails, and, um, I mean, you can, you can hold off until next month. Um, unless.
Did anybody look at the minutes?
I did.
And?
That was just a. Couple, there's a couple of things that you would change, just a little grammatical, but other than that, they were fine, in my opinion.
I'd be happy if the board wanted to approve. Whatever was written, if the board has read it, I, I confess I haven't, so.
I haven't reviewed it myself, um.
Well, we can wait till next month if there are two or three of us that haven't read it.
Why do we do that? Just because I think everybody should read them.
Yeah. Charlie, you won't, do you not want me to, um, typically on the decision, I would put you as one of the voting members on that doc decision? I mean, are you, um. Comfortable with you, with what you heard on the decision, or is your preference not to be?
I, I agree with the decision, I just haven't seen it.
Okay.
It wasn't in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, it was emailed, sorry, Charlie. I read it. It was very good, I read.
Yeah.
I got, I got all the pages of everything, and I got all the emails, so.
I think, I think Jen, I think Jen took good care of us, I don't know.
I got it.
She must have been on her list on the way out the door.
It was just, I took out some pages for Woody just to mess with him, but, um.
Well, and, and successfully, I might add.
Thank you, thank you. I, um, I will tell you, they, I believe they came, and I, when I said earlier, it wasn't, that, I was thinking about a more recent. Application that just got these, they were put together for me, these, this application, the only thing that I, so I didn't catch the Grady plan, but I did catch a plan today. On a new application, and that's been being fixed. I generally do capture it, but I was probably a little overwhelmed at the time.
Yeah, well.
So. There's no.
You're excused.
To, there's no way when we get one to tell them, I mean, they submitted that. What, three weeks ago, and there's no way to say. That you have to submit the correct site plan before our meeting. Though, yeah, if I had seen it, I would have, as I did for the next application, but it was a, it was a. Packaged packet and, um, it looks complete to me, um, and I probably missed it based on my haste of coming between the two things, so I'll take that as I normally do review. Um, and see what's missing. I wouldn't have noticed that, that the page is missing out on one of the packets, but, um.
Hey, Jen, that's, that's not your responsibility.
Yeah, I, I was.
The application specifically sets out what's supposed to be in the site plan, and they answered yes, that it was there, and it wasn't.
Right, it's section G, in fact, cuz that's how often I have to go back and say, you've got to add the neighbors, so, um, so I. When I, when my recommendation to, though, will be with anyone who takes over that, you know, they do double check, but they, it is upon the application, applicants provide you with what's been required by them.
Yeah, applicants have to provide a paper copy, correct, of, for each of us?
Yes, I still require that. I've cut it back. We used to do twelve, we're down to nine, so I think.
But, but still.
Oh, yes.
They're responsible for the stapling. I mean, it's not, this is a hard job, but. You know.
No.
To be sure that each, each packet is complete.
No, there's just been recent, the last two submissions I got. Were not. Collated, and that's the other thing, is I don't want to, no one should be responsible for collating a package, cuz we don't know in what order and what they want in that packet. And that's when mistakes have happened, so I've already addressed it with a couple, I already emailed them and said going forward, they can't come this way. Plus, I got a brutal paper cut, just gonna say it.
Oh.
Right on my, right on my hands. Still here, so that was the other, that, that made me a little sad, but. It's all right. I like.
Now, are you going to be with us in March, or is this the sayonara time?
Nope, I'm gonna be with you on March, but after then, April, I probably will just be transitioning to whomever they. Um. They hire.
I, I heard they might have hired somebody today.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I heard too, but I think. The onboarding at the time, no either, um. But I, I think what might happen is in March. That new person will listen and watch the meeting we do in March. And then in April, it'll be passing of the baton. We might, so, so you're stuck with me for a while longer.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we're gonna miss you so much. I'm gonna miss you guys so much. And I love seeing you all. I was very excited for tonight, and I was really tired, and I still was very excited.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who's the second?
Thank you.
Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
All right, I will be, we will all be talking.
Okay.
All right, great to see you all.
Thanks.
Take care, everyone. Of course, Charlie, great to see you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, everybody. Night.